Hello and welcome. We are now calling our hearing on instructional time compliance to order. We currently do not have anybody who has signed up to comment on instructional time during this hearing period. And so I'm going to hand the balance of the time over to Dr. Bridges to provide us with some information regarding instructional time compliance.
Thank you Chair Colette, members of the board and Superintendent Grodding. The rule for instructional time compliance allows school boards each year after a public hearing to exempt students in high school from the instructional time requirements. And there are three exemptions in the rule. One is for students that have completed all graduation requirements and have graduated. Example, that would be students in our community transition program. The second exemption would be for students that are in 12th grade that are on track to graduate as determined by credits. And the third would be for any high school students that are taking an accelerated course like advanced placement ID or are enrolled at early college. In the instructional time compliance document in the regular board packet, I've reported to you as required by rule, the number of students that would be exempted by the demographic pertinent demographic groups. And I want to make sure that you understand here that you're exempting these students from the calculation of the instructional time requirements, which is 92% of students in the district must meet the instructional time requirements and 80% of students in each school must meet instructional time requirements outlined in state rule. So even though you, the proposal is to exempt these students, only about a quarter of these students are not meeting the instructional time requirements. So of these almost 6,000 students, three quarters of them are meeting the instructional time requirements. The quarter of them that aren't are on some sort of late arrival or early release schedules. So they do not have a full instructional day. So I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board. Burn it to the exemption and then in the regular meeting, we'll talk about the whole picture of instructional time requirements.
Questions for Dr. Bridges?
Karen. How does this number compare across the years? Is this like more students or less students than before COVID? Or is that, I just was curious.
Thank you for the question, Dr. Perez. It's about the same number as last year.
Sunita.
So do you have to get an exemption from the board every year for this thing? Do you have to come to the board about this every year? Is that correct?
That is correct. That's how the rule is written.
Okay. So like when you say best view has 0% compliance, that doesn't mean it's really 0%. It's like only the quarter students. How does that, what does that number, you know, in that chart that you guys provided us about rescue has 0% compliance? What does that mean?
Yeah, I'd like to address that in the regular meeting where we talk about the number of hours that are scheduled and the other action that the board is going to have to take to get us into compliance, which is to count professional development time as instructional requirements. And I really appreciate your question this morning because it helped me hone my thinking to explain how these pieces all fit together.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and this helps what you gave the, the three sections, you know, that it's you, it's only mostly the senior class that you're talking about and kids who are on track are the ones who are getting because yeah, it wasn't very clear. Thank you. Thank you about that.
Thank you.
One more question for me. If, if 195 do not qualify for exemptions, what happens to those students?
So in the calculation of instructional time, we would, I'm including those students as not meeting the instructional time requirement. And I would have to say that doesn't necessarily mean that those students are not on track to graduation. Because the definition that I'm using is that they've got the number of credits entering their senior year and in the sub areas. Well, we know there are a number of students last year that had incompletes that are working on making those up. And so these students could very well be on track to graduation, but they don't reflect the criteria that I use to calculate if they should be included in the exemption or not.
Do newcomers like newcomers, would they be in part of that group? Kids that are maybe seniors, but not really seniors?
Yes, but they would only be in that group if they were on an early release or, or I'm sorry, a late arrival or early release schedule. And there is, to complicate this more, when we get to the main session, there, the 12th graders at base, even if the board takes action and counts professional development time as instructional time, the seniors at base are not going to meet the instructional time requirement regardless. So if there are any 12th graders at base that do not receive an exemption, they will be counted as not meeting instructional time. This is really complicated.
Dr. Bridges, I just wanted to add a piece of clarification. The instructional time mandate is on the district to offer those minutes and to have a percentages of students availing themselves of that. That, that, that's not, the individual student makes their choices about courses they're taking or whatnot. So it's not, the instructional time mandate from the state frankly has no, it has no accountability for the student themselves. If that makes, if that makes sense for that clarification to your question.
Thank you.
David, what you're saying is by granting this waiver, we're not reducing the amount of minutes being offered to students. They will still be offered, but there are some students who, because they're on track to graduate or for potentially other reasons that John's getting into, may not be taking enough courses to avail themselves of all of those minutes. And so when it comes down to compliance with state standards, we need to make this adjustment or we'll be out of compliance.
Yes. And, and just to add to that, so the, the question was sort of what happens to those students who are not meeting the man, the minutes mandate? The mandate is not on the student to meet a minutes mandate.
It's on the district.
That's on, that's on a district to offer and get, you know, kids to be attending class and all that sort of thing. Otherwise you would get to this point where you're defining whether or not you attended enough days to meet a minutes requirement. We don't, we don't have seat time minutes requirements for credit or graduation. That's not, that's not a mandate on the kid.
And the mandate on the district isn't on individual students, but a percentage of the total.
Right, right.
Okay. So and just for the board, I think a lot of our students, if they're on track and they know they're on track, many of them will get a job. So they'll go out, they'll be working. If it's a school internship, they definitely can get some credit there, but some of them actually go out and get internships. Otherwise that may not, may not count credit wise. They may want to do something on their own. So I would say the large majority of these students are probably, you know, they're, they're, they're on track. They're just, they're just deciding not to take full advantage of those minutes. I think you put it well, Tom.
Has there been any change in the historical percentage of students availing themselves of those minutes over time? Or is this held steady?
I think too, I didn't look at it exactly and I can look, let me look before the, the board session, look at last year's situation page and see how the numbers compare, both in terms of the number of exemptions and then the, the percentage of kids that aren't meeting that instructional time requirement because of early release or late arrival.
Thanks, John. Any other questions from the board? We have about five minutes more left in our, our hearing here. So we'll be ending at 6:25. So, oh, Sunita.
Since we have the time, you said that base school will not meet the exemption, meet, meet the compliance requirement. And is it because that kids do their projects by their, by themselves? Is it, is it the, the way method of teaching that they do not need that instructional time? Does that, does that make sense?
That's a great question and I'll, I'll do this in the regular session as well. So base has a schedule this year where the students have more an advisory period every day, unlike the other two option schools. So the option schools have less instructional time to begin with. This year, because of the return from distance learning last year, the principal and staff really thought it was important that those students have contact with an advisory period every day. The other two option schools, they have an advisory twice a week. Well, what the, having that advisory five days a week introduces an extra passing period, which we can't count as instructional time. The other issue with all the other things that have happened with the calendar with seniors at that school is that the, the last day for seniors is as the amount of school, I think it's nine days earlier. So when you add, do all the calculations, the number of hours at base is 931 hours for 12th graders. And even if the board decides to count instructional time or professional development is instructional time, that only gets them to 960 hours for 12th graders. And the minimum is 966. So that's a long winded saying. It's, it's a function of our calendar, the senior release date, and then their particular schedule at that school.
Thank you. Thanks.
John, for situations in which the number of minutes being met is not a function of students availing themselves of opportunities, but is a function of just not enough instructional time. Do we have a plan to bring that back into correction in future years so that they will have enough instructional time?
Tom, that's a great question. I have not talked to the principal and, and we'll have a new principal at base next year, whether they're going to continue with that five days of advisory or now that students have had a full year on campus, knock on wood, that they won't need to have that advisory that often and they can capture a little more instructional time each day. So that they will meet the requirements in future years.
And let me, Tom, I was going to say to your question, whenever we, if we, you know, if we're reporting on a standard that we're deficient in, there's got to be some sort of action plan saying, okay, how are you going to rectify this? So I think John probably hit it is there probably have to either be, you know, adjustment in time. It could be, I've seen where schools have cut down passing time, cut down advisory time or at some point, you know, increase instructional time. But a lot of time, if you're going to be adding any more days, it's a much more complicated process because that's going to involve bargaining.
And John, just so that I can understand, part of what's happening here is there was a decision made to support social emotional learning because of the pandemic and to provide our students with extra time for social emotional learning. I just want to make sure that that may be the unspoken thing in the background and that that's brought to the fore.
Thanks, Tom. And to clarify, that doesn't mean that base is out of compliance with instructional time because the requirement at the school level is 80% of students and their senior class is not even close to 80%. But I can certainly understand the board's concern that we want to, as best we can, make sure that all students have the required instructional, have the opportunity to have the required instructional time that's required by the state. And then the students have the choice about early release, late arrival, whether they want to take advantage of the full instructional time that we offer in each of our schools.
Karen.
I think it's important to note too, that we've talked in the board, and I'll speak for myself at this point, of the importance of social emotional learning support for our students. And we see that when they do have, whether it's an advisory or time throughout the year, when they can actually make, build those relationships at critical times with adults, that that is an important piece. So just putting it out there, that instructional time is very important. But, and we know that social emotional learning, building relationships is just as important for our kids, especially right now.
So we, we're at 6:25. So I'm going to put a bookmark in this chapter and we can come back to it later in the board meeting. So that will end our public hearing on instructional time compliance. And the school board meeting will begin in just a couple of minutes more.
And just as a reminder, go ahead and exit the Zoom and use the second link in that email I'd sent you to join the regular board meeting Zoom session. Thanks, everybody. to join the regular board meeting Zoom session. Thanks, everybody.